Mayor, it's 6:30 now. Would you like me to start the broadcast?
Yes, Christina, please.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 1, 2022. It's 6:30 and I'd like to begin the meeting. First of all, go-to webinar transcripts of council meetings are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download the services such as Live Transcript or Live Caption. Given the global COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being conducted both telephonically and in person. Members of the City Council and staff may be participating either in person or telephonically. The city is encouraged, the public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov or in-person, Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We've also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment, period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you're giving your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m. and archived for viewing on the city's website. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll stand for that, then we'll have the invocation, so please remain standing. Please rise.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the justiciable liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have the invocation by Sheik Farhan Zubiyari, Dean of Institute of Knowledge Seminary.
Mayor, I do not see him online. I will unmute a couple other people that are on here in case they're him. Sheik Farhan, are you there? Okay, he has not joined us tonight.
May I volunteer?
Yes, please. Welcome. Please give us your name.
Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Chaitia, member of the Rotary Club here in Diamond Bar. Dear Lord of the universe, you bless us every day. You open possibilities for us all. You give us good government. You give us good ethics. You give us, you give us our humanity. For this, we are thankful. We are thankful tonight for the good government that will be done here. In your name, sir. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Santana, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lou?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chow?
Here.
Mayor Lo?
I'm here as well. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Mr. Fox, is, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. The agenda is hereby approved. Our first item of business is that we have special presentations, and we actually have a proclamation tonight. Tonight's proclamation is that we are designating November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Let me just read the present, the proclamation even though we do not have a representative from the Lung, Lung Association with us this evening. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer-related death among men and women in the United States, accounting for more deaths than colon, breast, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas lung cancer in individuals who have never smoked is the seventh-leading cause of lung cancer-related death and accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the country every year. And the proportion of lung cancers diagnosed in people who never smoked is increasing nationwide. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, there are 18,625 new lung cancer cases and 13,035 lung cancer-related deaths, deaths, deaths in the county of Los Angeles between 2015 and 2019. And whereas the best success against lung cancer is funding for research, early diagnosis and treatment. However, widespread stigma is hindering awareness of and research into lung cancer risk factors other than smoking and delaying people from seeking early diagnosis and treatment. And whereas organizations working in Los Angeles County, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to increasing lung cancer awareness and screening rates in the country. Now, therefore Lung, Diamond, the city of Diamond Bar does hereby proclaim November 2022 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Diamond Bar and encourages everyone to learn more about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. And that proclamation is signed by the entire City Council. It's dated November 1, 2022. I just want to share that lung cancer is really more common than, than we know, and as this proclamation states, it's, it's, it affects more people than colon, breast, and prostate cancer combined. And, and we're really familiar with those. So, so just be aware that this is really a deadly disease. And please, if you know of anyone who's experienced some, some kind of symptoms, to ask them to seek treatment as soon as possible. Okay? Thank you. Next, we have City Manager Reports and Recommendations. Mr. Fox?
There are no additional reports or recommendations this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, that brings us to public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the City Council values your comments, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the City Council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the City Council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak under public comments. I have three public comment cards at this time. First is from Ms. Robin Smith. Ms. Smith, would you join us? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. And I want to thank the Honorable Counsel for hearing my words tonight. I'm Robin Smith. I'm a resident, longtime resident in Diamond Bar. I'm also a conservationist, and I have an award-winning native garden that's recognized by the Walnut Valley Water District as carbon negative. It's also a demonstration garden that teaches communities and decision-makers about the value of native habitats here locally. I'm here this evening to bring up an active project right now, the Canyon Loop Trail work that I've spoken on previously. And I would like to point out a couple of problems we're having on this project right now. I have been in contact with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. These are the trustee agencies for our natural resources, and we've been overseeing this project for four years now, I think. And they confirmed to me today that they have not yet been contacted to advise or help with this project at all. And we have reports. I've had some residents report to me this week that there is some grading going on the trail. I have a document here that shows this area is a repairian area, and the CDFW has notified me that the city has not pulled any permits with regards to any water bodies on the trail area. The other issues that I'd like to offer some solutions for are as follows. The excessive grading on the trail is widening an already eight-to-10-foot-wide trail. That is excessive. That's going to cause erosion from the result of the construction. The, at this moment, there is PVC drainage piping staged for installation. No natural trail should have any kind of fabricated manufactured drainage items, you know, infrastructure like PVC piping. That goes along with a conversation I had with Ryan White. I wanted to notify Mr. White that the installation of the city's traditional cement and cobblestone gutters that follow the switchback are inefficient, outdated. They actually cause erosion. They should really be removed from the other trails that have them. And if we're not doing bioswales on the trail, we're wasting our money and actually downgrading the quality of the trail. I had a very positive conversation with Ryan, but my question to all of you is, how do we do a change order and make sure that the construction we are implementing on an active project is done properly? It's really surprising to me that the people who have planned this project are not aware of the ecological construction practices that are practiced by all other native trail venues like, you know, Chino Hills Park and so forth. The, the overall problem in this is the contractor is a manufactured construction contractor. They have no training, no knowledge of any kind of ecological practices that should be performed on the trail. I've been notified that there's supposed to be experts, consultants, other overseeing. I, I don't know if I'm seeing that. I don't know for a fact, but I will be looking into it. The damage in the photographs that I see now are really troubling. I'm seeing animals that are displaced, and the birds are, you know, disturbed. There doesn't seem to be any monitoring or intervention. I'd like that investigated and improved. So I would appreciate your consideration of this because this is an active project. As a conservationist locally, I get contacted by many residents about this situation, and I'm looking into it myself. So if you want to know any details about the solutions, the plan for bioswales, or other features that will make this trail a success, I'm happy to be available and to give you that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, we have Chi Ah-Teng. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Chi Ah-Teng. I'm a longtime resident in Diamond Bar City. I am interested and I'm concerned about the city's budget. Recently, I received a mailer from three City Council members, Councilmember Tai, Councilmember Lyons, Councilmember Lu-Slow, stating that they have successfully balanced every city budget. So that pretty much poked my interest. So I went to city's website to, to check the city's financial situation. And after reviewing Diamond Bar City's annual comprehensive financial report, which is abbreviated as ACFR, which is available on city's website, I made a very simple chart. I hope that the average people like me can understand city's finance. ACFR is an audited financial report, so it should be very reliable for the city. Yet, not yet. I'm not a financial expert, but when I look at the business financial report, the first thing I look at is the profit and loss. So I want to know its income. I want to know business expenses, and the income is greater than expenses, it makes profits. Otherwise, it's a loss. That's basically a business 101. So I have made this chart from the income and expenses from the ACFR, and you can put, put that the chart for everybody to view. You can put it on. Okay. Look at the, look at this report, okay? The latest report is 2020 to 2021. Okay, on the left side is the fiscal year. The middle, middle column is the revenue, which is income. The right one is the cost, which is the expenses. The far right side is the net income or net loss. So you can see out of the, four out of the six years from 2015 to 2021, the four years there are, they have significant loss of the city's financial, financial situation. It, it was especially prominent in 2016 and 2017. And the total loss I calculated is on the right lower corner is 11.38 million, which is pretty significant. So business 101, that from the last six years, four out of six is negative. We got a loss. And the total loss is minus 11 million plus. So I would hardly call this a balanced budget. Because when you look at what's the definition of balanced budget? A balanced budget, particularly that for the government, is a budget in which revenues are equal to expenditures. Does neither a budget deficit or budget surplus exist? But more generally, it is a budget that has no budget deficit but could possibly have a budget surplus. So if you're talking about a balanced budget, you should at least have a equal income and expenses. Maybe you should have a little surplus. And I know that the business has an up and down time. Sometimes you make money, sometimes you, you have a loss. Sometimes the profit can compensate for the loss. So over a long period of time, maybe you'll have a balanced budget. But each year's budget, if you claim it to be balanced, which is not true. And also that accumulated from over the, this is six years, you got an 11 million deficit. I think we have a pretty big gap to fill. So I wish that all the city will work together to try to eliminate that gap in the next couple of years. Thank you very much for your attention. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Tang, would it be okay with you if we inserted text into, Mr. Tang? Would it be okay with you if it is possible that we insert the name, your name and the date and the words prepared by on the chart that you just displayed? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of City Council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu. I am the internal community library manager of Diamond Bar Library. The Read Together Diamond Bar Committee selected author Jory Jones, "The Bad Seed" as this year's children's book selection. Please join us as we discuss the book on November 17th at 4:00 p.m. Children will decorate their own positive sinking jar afterwards and start collecting their magic thoughts to bring fun and happiness to everyday life. This program is for children ages 6 to 11. And on Saturday, November 19th at 2:00 p.m., please join us as we meet the world-renowned author Wendy Van Dreden and discuss her book, the Read Together Diamond Bar Teen and Adult Book Selection of the Year, Wild Bird. It is a memorable book about family, friendship, forgiveness, and second chances. And the book was selected as American Library Associate, American Library Association's Best Fiction for Young Adult in 2019. This program is sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. Please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org for additional program information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment that hasn't submitted a card? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were two emails from Eric Lee that were submitted for public comment tonight, and they were forwarded to the City Council and placed at the entrance of the meeting for public viewing. If any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the City Council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program. I will unmute callers on the line one at a time, and you'll know it's your turn to speak when I announce your name and you hear a recorded message state "unmuted." And I do not see any hand raised, Mayor.
Okay. All right then. There's no one else on the phone that wishes to address the City Council. I see no one in the audience, therefore I will close public comments for this evening. Thank you. Item number four is Schedule of Future Events, and number five is Consent Calendar. I'll turn those both. Well, you know what? Before I do that, let me ask if staff has any response to the public comments that were provided this evening.
We do not have any responses at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to item number four, Schedule of Future Events, and under, number five, which is Consent Calendar. Mr. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The schedule of events for the next couple of weeks include Coffee with a Cop will be held on Tuesday, November 8th from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at S&amp;J Grand Cafe, which is located at the Plaza Diamond Creek at the corner of Golden Springs and Brea Canyon. The Planning Commission will meet on Tuesday, November 8th at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. The Trace Romanos Conservation Authority will meet on Wednesday evening, November 9th at 6:00 p.m., also in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. Our Veterans Day Recognition Program will be held on Wednesday, November 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Diamond Bar Center. And our Traffic and Transportation Commission will be meeting on Thursday evening, November 10th at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And our next City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 15th at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD Auditorium. And as a reminder, don't forget, Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, and City Hall will be closed on Friday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. And that concludes the schedule of events. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the minutes from October 18th meeting and ratification of the check register dated October 12th through October 25th. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Are there any items on the consent calendar that anyone wishes to pull, or if there would be a motion?
I move for approval.
All second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Chow and a second by Councilmember Lyons. Ms. Santana, would you help us with the roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chow?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, going to number six, public hearings. There are none this evening. And that brings us to item number seven, which is Council Consideration. And 7.1 is the first reading of ordinance number 03-2022. And I will turn that over to you, Mr. Fox.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask our contract building official, Raymond Tao, to make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's request is to introduce the ordinance for the Building Code amendments, which also includes expediting for electric vehicle charger permits as required by state law. The Building Code ordinance amendments occur every three years, and this is a restatement of the same ones that we had in 2022, or 2019, just reiterated for 2022 under the 22 Building Code requirements under the state. The only additional thing that we have is for electric vehicle chargers, which is also mandated by state. It's basically the same thing as what we approved back in December 3rd, 2019 by council. And again, the only addition is the state-mandated vehicle charging requirement as referenced under the, and also referencing the 2022 state code. The expedited vehicle charger requirements include creating a checklist, which we've already created. We just need to implement it. It's done by other agencies already, so it's already tested and tried. The, also requires electronic submittals and electronic signatures, which we already have in our submittal process. There is one item on page five of the ordinance on item number 21 for the findings, which refers to an Exhibit A. That one is an error, so we would want to consider adjusting that. But other than that, the requirement of what we're trying to do is introduce the ordinance by first reading by title only, way full reading of the ordinance, and set for a public hearing, second reading, and adoption of the, for November 15th, 2022 council meeting. I think I need to read the title of the ordinance. So... So the ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Diamond Bar, California, amending Title 15 of the Diamond Bar City Code, adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Code, volumes 1 and 2, including Chapter 1, Division 2, and appendices I-N-J thereto, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, and the appendices thereto, the 2022 California Plumbing Code, and the appendices thereto, the 2022 California Electrical Code, and the appendices thereto, the 2022 California Residential Code, including appendices H-J-K-O thereto, the California Fire Code, including chapters 1 through 80 chapters, appendices O-P-Q and R, and the 2022 California Green Building Code without appendices thereto, and Title 26 of the LA County Building Code, and the Uniform Housing Code, together with certain amendments, additions, deletions, and exceptions. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll turn it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Tao. You mentioned, that's, the title is really a mouthful, isn't it? You mentioned that there was an error on page five of the, of the, of the staff report. Can you identify the correction so that we are actually making a motion? We're on page five. What is the error, or what should be the correction?
Yes, about two-thirds of the way down, there's finding number 21. I can read it out. It's the additional findings in support of addition, or excuse me, supportive adoption of more restrictive building standards are set forth in Exhibit A and are incorporated by reference. That's an error because there is no Exhibit A in this case.
So, so it should read additional findings in support of adoptive, adoption of more restrictive building standards, period? Or just delete the whole 21?
Should, should be deleted.
Okay, so let the record reflect that item number 21 should be deleted in its entirety. Does that sound right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Before we have motions, let me open it up for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment with respect to this item? Okay, I see no one here in the audience. Ms. Santana, let me turn it over to you to see if there's anyone in- Ms. Santana, let me turn it over to you to see if there's anyone at home that would like to make a public comment on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were no emails submitted for this item, and if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council regarding item 7.1, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, therefore I will close the public comment period for this item. Anyone on council with a question or a public comment? Okay, how about a motion?
Mayor, I'll move the, let's see here, the first reading of ordinance number 3, 2022, as presented, except that we are deleting item number 21 on page five.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Lyons, and I'm sorry, was that a second by Councilmember Liu? Ms. Santana, would you help us out with the roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Chiao?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. And this is for the first reading, and I'll come back for a second reading. Thank you, Mr. Tao. Okay, brings us to item number eight, council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance. Terrific. Let me start with Councilmember Liu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank staff for their presentation. Also, I'd like to thank staff and all the volunteers for the fun-filled Halloween parties for the kids, the pubs, and the seniors. I had the honor of being one of the judges for the pubs' custom contests, and there were some very, very creative customs. It was so great to see a community come together and interact and have fun with each other. And I receive a lot of appreciative feedbacks. Thank you. And I will look forward to seeing everyone at the veterans' recognition event. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Piggybacking on what Councilman Chiao said, I think I've shared before, I walk the dog every day, 5:00, 5:30 at Pantera. And on Saturday, it was remarkable to me to see not just a few of them, not the ones that drew the short straws, but I counted at one time, I think, 20 or 30, including the volunteers that were there. The bright lights that they had in place, so it could be set up. Basketball courts were used. Both tennis courts were used. And just a tremendous job by staff in putting that together. We need to make sure that we appreciate what they do. I remember, whether it's Ryan or Bob before him, that, you know, Andy would say the same thing, that, you know, we're the face. We get the kudos, but we know that there were a lot of people, and God only knows what time they got up to be there that early. And by the way, the next morning, poof, it was gone. So they do a tremendous job, and they take good care of the community in having those programs available. And it's seamless. They do a terrific job. So thanks very much to Parks and Recreation staff. And then veterans' recognition ceremony on November 9th at 9 o'clock at the Diamond Bar Center. Like, again, I just said, we do a lot of things really well for the community. This is one of a handful that is right up there with my favorites. It's wonderful to be able to honor the veterans current, just coming out of service, and that have served many, many, many years ago. So if you're familiar with the Darden Sisters, they'll be back, but now they're known as the Darden Group because they let their little brother into the fold. So I hope you'll see us on November 9th. Hope everybody will remember, one week from today, you'll still have an hour to vote. So please remember to get out and vote. Thank you. Good night, and God bless you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor. At my Capitol Project meeting last week, we were assured that the construction on the Diamond Bar Golf Course and the renovation of the golf course continues to be on schedule to reopen on March of next year. So that was good. And congratulations to our mayor and the city staff for an excellent State of the City event. It was really good to see so many people there. And I noticed that at two different times, that staff had to get more chairs. So I thought that was a really good thing, too, that people are really wanting to get out and see what's going on in the city. And I heard some very good comments about your presentation and the videos and that. As my colleague said, Barktober was fabulous. Thank you, staff, for that. My dog Kenzie loved the attention and the treats, so all was good. Christina, would you please put up that photo? You know, maybe it's Paul. Who's going to put up my photo? There it is. Hmm, it doesn't look as good here as it did in person. But this photo was taken by Eunice Oh, who's a Diamond Bar resident, and she shot it at the Vermillion Cliffs National Monument in Arizona. And she actually won third prize in a really big photo contest that's put on by AAA. And you can see her photo and the list of prizes that she won, which is really lengthy, actually in the Westways Magazine. There's a very big picture of it. So that's exciting for sure for one of our residents. You can take the photo down now. And then, as my colleague said, Tuesday, of course, is Election Day. Generally, we have a council meeting on Election Day, so this seems a little bit odd. I know that there's a good reason why we don't. And a Veterans Day celebration at the Diamond Bar Center on the 9th is just, it's my favorite event of the year. It's just a really heartwarming event where you get close to the veterans and hear good music. And please join us. Love to have you there. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Chiao?
Okay, thank you. So this morning, Mayor Lo, myself, and Councilmember Liu had the pleasure of attending a very special event at the fire station. It was 118 Allen City of Industry, where Assemblymember Lisa Calderon and Senator Bob Archilada presented a $500,000 check for, oh, there it is.
Surprise.
This funding will assist the L.A. Fire Department with the construction of two new heli hydrants and the completion of a retrofit to eight portable dip tanks with automatic filled valves, and one of which will be somewhere near Diamond Bar. So, you know, given that we're in a fairly high-risk fire area, so I think having a dip hydrant near our backyard will be certainly helpful in cutting down on response time should the need arises. So I wanted to thank our representative up in Sacramento for working on behalf of the region. And I'm also looking forward to the veterans' event next week, and hopefully we'll see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to pile on and thank our staff for a really fun Halloween party last Saturday. And I have a, I couldn't resist, so I have small photos to show you. And I know that the staff was super busy. They probably didn't get around to walking around, and some people couldn't attend the event. But look at that, the In-N-Out little dog. They won first prize. I had the pleasure of judging the small dog contest. And then, not to be outdone, we have Miss Kitty Cat, because it shouldn't be just all dogs, so the kitty cats got involved in the contest as well. And then finally, on your right is just the sweetest little puppy who just has not given up. He's doing everything that he can to get around and show off and just be as happy as can be. And then, let me, the next thing I want to talk about is a big thank you to the Walnut Valley Rotary Club for bringing Red Ribbon Week to Diamond Bar High School on October 22nd. This red ribbon was started by, started with the story of Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena. He was a DEA agent who was tortured and killed in Mexico in 1985. And in honor of Kiki's memory and in his battle, in memory of his battle against illegal drugs, his friends and neighbors began to wear red badges of satin. Then parents began to form coalitions using Agent Camarena as their model while embracing his belief that one person can make a difference. So Red Ribbon serves as a catalyst now to mobilize communities, to educate our youth, and encourage participation in drug prevention and activities. So this is an item that's really close to my heart. The event at Diamond Bar High School was to bring awareness and education to our schools. And here in the photo, the gentleman that's next to me, that's the Honorable Enrique Camarena Jr. He's the son of the agent that was killed. And next to him is Mrs. Enrique Camarena. She's the widow of Kiki Camarena. And as you can see, they're both still active in bringing the message of Red Ribbon Week. They told me that they had traveled from their hometown, which is, I believe it's in San Diego County. They traveled to Diamond Bar the night before, stayed overnight, so they can participate in our event. And they're out there answering questions and just encouraging kids to stay away from drugs, to stay away from any kind of narcotics, because they realize the devastating effects of illegal substances and the tragedies that will visit themselves and their families and their friends. Mr. Camarena Jr., the honorable, he is a judge now, and he sits in San Diego County. So we just really thank both of them for the work that they do and for carrying on the memory of their father. And to Rotary, thank you for hosting this very, very special event. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate Walnut Councilmember and former mayor Robert Pacheco, who retired on October 26th. Councilmember Liu and I had the pleasure and the privilege of attending his retirement last week, and it was just a really great celebration. Bob Pacheco served this community for three decades. He's now 88. He served on the Walnut City Council for over 10 years. He served six years in the Assembly, representing the 60th District. He was a member of Cal OSHA Appeals Board. He served as a senior advisor to the governor on jobs, workforce, and development. And he was appointed to the United States Naval Academy Board of Visitors, so he was very, very busy. And in addition to being the senior partner of his law firm and running another successful business, Bob founded the Walnut Valley Educational Foundation and established numerous other charitable organizations over the years. So quite fittingly, Bob received numerous awards and accolades during his years of public service. And Bob, together with his wife Gail, they impacted and benefited our local schools and our community. So thank you, Bob, for your years of service. You have very well earned your retirement. And all of us here in Diamond Bar wishes you the very best in your next chapter of life. And so with that, I'll say goodnight at 7:10, and thank you for joining us. Good night.